Panelists and wanted to just give a little bit of background in regards to consortium of cities. A couple of things about what we're doing right now for 2021. As the new lead for this year, starting in January, our first meeting was the first week of February. And so what we did is change the format a little bit, just really to focus on working cohorts and working together. And so in 2021, members have agreed to share how their own jurisdictions are addressing or have addressed the meeting topic priority that we all chose together. And so we are, when we meet every other month, doing five to seven minute presentations, either with our town council or with staff from each one of those organizations as well. And followed by group discussion, really exploring what we can learn from each other, how we can work together throughout Boulder County and what opportunities exist to across jurisdictions to make progress on the priority areas. And so in February, we heard from Sally Anderson, Congressman Nagusa's Deputy Chief of Staff District Director, to give us some insight about what was coming along in the session and what to plan for. In April, we and in February, excuse me, we also then worked with our, the group that was on from leads from each one of those municipalities and talked about what those priority focus areas were and then chose those topics for this year. In April, we talked about natural disasters and resiliency again with presentations from around the area. In June, we talked about affordable and attainable housing and really got some insight about where we can be supportive of each other along the Boulder County corridor. And we also have every year, the Consortium of City hosts Boulder County Regional Transportation Sales Tax Annual Report. And so we had that group meet with us as well and give that update in June. And then later on this year, some of the other topics that we've agreed to and discussed together that would be really helpful for each one of our communities is to talk about economic vitality, which we'll do on August 4th and economic sustainability. In October, we'll discuss sustainability initiatives. And then in December, we'll talk about equity in general amongst communities. And so the exciting part about all of that is really looking at how our communities define the priority area because we know it's different depending on where we are throughout Boulder County, what work in our communities is being done to address the priority area and what metrics communities are using again, so that we can be collaborative and that we can work together. I want to do a little bit of introduction and go over the agenda for folks who might be watching later, who won't be reading through the chat. We meet on the first Wednesday, every other month from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. And tonight we have a group of folks that are going to be presenting on the the opportunities in local communities based on Senate Bill 256 to look at local kind of regulation. And so we have a few different presenters. We've had a change of schedule through the day. One of our subject matter experts was not was not able to join us. We are still virtual and will be in person. Hopefully later on this fall with a lot of other organizations. So I do want to give a special thank you to Boulder County staff who's helping us one navigate the virtual world here. And then also to one of our policy analysts, Mark Rosen, who supports from a staff perspective, this particular group consortium of cities. And we can't make all of these pieces happen without supportive staff here at the county. So I want to give folks that are panelists, who are members of the consortium, who are on an opportunity to do a brief introduction of your name and your title and your agency, just so we, one, so we know who's here. And also for folks who are looking to find out who their rep is in their area, that would be a great opportunity. So I am going to try my best on the screen to call names out so that you'll have an opportunity again, just to say your name and and your title and which jurisdiction municipality that you're that you're with. And then we will go into our presentations. We always, the consortium of cities will always take a break in the middle of our work so that we can shift positions or grab something to eat for dinner, et cetera, as life continues on the virtual world. So you will be able to expect a little bit of a break. We do have some of our registries, our legislators here with us this evening as well. So again, this is a conversation that was brought to us by community, just to find out how can we and respond to state legislation that has occurred. So the same way that we're responding to other legislation, for example, the transportation bill 260. What does that mean for our local communities? And folks are asking, what does that mean for us? How do we implement that? And some of the other legislation that's coming across. So let's do our introductions and Polly. I've got Polly there. And then Tim. If you all want to start.
Do you, Marta, do you want me to start? I'm sorry. I thought you had said Polly.
Yeah, I did. I think she just got unmuted.
Yeah, I did. What is it that you want?
Oh, the same way we do at all of our consortium of cities meetings, just to say your name.
Oh, okay, okay. Good. I thought you wanted me to give a speech. Polly Christensen, Longmont City Council.
Hello, Tim Howard, Superior Board of Trustees.
Great. Andrew and then Kyle.
Hey, everyone. I'm Andrew Prawski. I'm the Deputy Director of State Policy at Everytown for Gun Safety. I help provide strategic policy advice to stakeholders across the country on effective measures to prevent gun violence. And really excited to join you all this evening.
Thank you.
Hi, folks. I'm Kyle Brown, Council Member here in Louisville.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Allison and then Lexi.
Hi, I'm Allison Anderman. I'm Senior Counsel at Giffords Law Center to Prevent Gun Violence. And I have been working on gun violence prevention efforts with cities, towns, counties, and communities around the United States for over seven years.
I'm Lexi Nolan. I'm the Deputy Director of Boulder County Public Health.
Thank you both. Holly and then Hannah.
Hi, I'm Holly Rogan from Lyons Board of Trustees.
Hi, everyone. I'm Hannah Shearer. I'm Litigation Director at Giffords Law Center to Prevent Gun Violence.
Thank you both. Brian. And then Rachel.
Brian Wong, Lafayette City Council.
Hey, I'm Rachel Friend, City of Boulder, City Council.
Thank you both. Mike. And then Matt.
Hi, everyone. Mike Mead, I'm the Director of Local Government Affairs at Everytown for Gun Safety and like Allison, working with cities, counties, school boards all across the country. Thanks so much.
Marta, did you refer to me? Because there are a lot of Matts and Lot Joneses out there in this world.
On my screen, there's only one Matt right now.
Okay, all right. Matt Jones, Boulder County Commissioner, live in Louisville.
Thank you. Claire and then Mark.
I can't tell if I'm unmuted. I guess I am. Claire Levy, County Commissioner and colleague of Matt Jones and Marta Loachim.
And good evening, everyone. Mark Rosen, and a Boulder County Commissioners Office staff. Appreciate all of you joining us this evening and looking forward to the conversation.
Thanks again for all your help, Mark, on the coordination. Let's see her. I've got Barb and then Chris.
Hi, everybody. Barb Halban. I'm really just co-hosting tonight, but thank you. I've worked with the county commissioners as the Public Information Officer.
Hi, I'm Chris Lay. I'm a Louisville City Councilman. Sitting in tonight here.
Great, thank you. And I want to, we'll have a little time to hear from our legislators here in a bit, but I would like to thank and welcome both Judy Amabelay and Edie Hooton. If you'd like to do your quick intros, Judy.
Yeah, I'm Judy Amabelay, and I represent House District 13, which is the western part of Boulder, the city of Boulder, Western Boulder County, Gilpin, Clear Creek, Grand and Jackson Counties.
Hi, and I'm Edie Hooton. I represent House District 10, which is Center Boulder going east to Gun Barrel. And I am the House sponsor of Senate Bill 256, which we are discussing this evening.
Great. Thank you all. And I'll try and watch the participant list in case there's other folks that join us in on the panelist side while we're talking to give them an opportunity to introduce, which is just how we typically do our consortium meetings. So thanks again, everybody for participating. So we're going to jump right in here with our presentations. And we'll start with the collaborative action with Rachel Friend and Tim Howard.
Thanks, Marta. And it is really a pleasure to be here with all of you tonight. For Tim and I have been kind of working on this concept for coming up with a collaborative kind of collective action that we could take in response to 1256. So excited to be here. And I think Tim's going to do most of the presenting and also just wanted to say thank you to Edie Hooton and Judy Amabelay and Steve Femberg, if he's here for getting us here with 1256.
I apologize. I'm going to stop you for just a minute because I can see staff. Jennifer Hill, you've got your hand up. So I want to make sure we're not having a tech issue.
Just trying to get this screen share going. One second, please.
Okay.
While we're waiting to do that, I just want to echo Rachel's comments. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. And as more importantly, thank you to Representative Amabelay, Representative Hooton for moving forward with a number of initiatives, not the least of which is SB 256, which is kind of really the focus tonight. Are we ready to go, Jennifer? Thumbs up? Okay, so if you just go to the next slide. So the the basic concept here is that if we if we act, potentially act together, we can have a greater impact. And the genesis of this activity was shortly after the King's King Super Shooting. I reached out to Rachel to talk about what we might do in Superior in collaboration with Boulder City to potentially help make everyone just a slight bit safer. And then 256 started to move forward. And so what you're going to see here is kind of the work we've been pursuing for the last two months or so in collaboration with others. And it really now became operative, given the passing and the signing of Senate Bill 256. So if we go to the next slide, just to kind of set the context. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to read through these. But, you know, Colorado, we have a, we have a long history of mass shootings and gun violence. We, we just passed a Fourth of July weekend in our country where 233 people were killed with gun violence. I think most of 500 were injured. And surprisingly, that number was down 26% from the report. So it is an epidemic. I think in the state of New York over this past month, more people died from gun violence than from COVID. So we're dealing with an epidemic. And the question is, can we do some things locally? Just as Boulder County Public Health did on the COVID side, that can make all of us a bit safer. Rachel, do you want to chime in on on kind of this is the kind of starting point?
No, I think that's well said, Tim. And again, the genesis is sort of, I would say that Tim and I and others were kind of watching the state legislation move forward and thinking through, how could we collaborate to take advantage of opportunities to try and keep our cities safest, especially given what had happened in Boulder in March. So I think probably next slide.
So, you know, as was noted, the state legislature did move forward a number of gun violence prevention legislation this year. We're going to focus on 256, but kind of some of our partners here who are going to be speaking after us, both from Giffords and Everytown. Also, we're active in contributing to that legislation. But expanded background checks, establishment of a gun violence prevention office, state storage of firearms and a requirement to report lost or stolen weapons. All of these contribute to us being safer. But what we know is it's not necessarily far enough. And the previous slide kind of highlighted that. So there's more to do. And the question is, what can we do? What can we possibly do? And that's, that's where we are today. And because of 256 being signed into into law, we have the opportunity to act. So that's what that's what we want to talk to you about, about some ideas there. So if we go to the next slide. We're not going to spend a lot of time on 256. I think we're going to hear a little bit from Representative Amabelay and sponsor Representative Hooton on that a bit, a bit later. But and we can also hear from from our legal experts from Giffords and Everytown in that regard. But what it does do, it sets the stage for us to potentially do something at a local level. And if we do it at a coordinated local level, potentially it becomes a regional activity. So we, as local leaders, have an opportunity to do more than just pass resolutions that urge the state legislature to act. We get to act at this point. But wanting to do it and actually bringing it to fruition are two very different things. So what we want to do is touch on how we might do it. Rachel, any, any comments on 256 before we jump in?
No, I would just highlight the first bullet, that being the first state to repeal preemption is is really exciting for Colorado and an opportunity for us to do something novel and inventive in light of that. And as you will hear from our reps, the the whole point of that is that cities are in a good position to to respond to the type of gun violence that they experience in their cities. In a city like Boulder, with a higher population density and a higher number of people coming into to our space during the workdays, we know that those things statistically correlate with a higher likelihood of mass shootings. So we will likely go for something like an assault weapons ban, but that is reinstating it. So that is not something that that all of the cities are going to want to do, but it's, it's we have a really exciting opportunity to be the first in the country to act in ways that benefit our cities. So with that, back to you, Tim.
All right. Next slide, please. So there are many challenges to enacting local gun laws. And really at the front of it, I think we have to acknowledge is that anything we do locally will be less impactful than it would be if it were adopted statewide. And it's even less, less so than if it would have been adopted nationwide. So what we're not, what we're not looking for here is the perfect. What we're looking for is what can be done that has an incremental benefit and improves the health and safety for our residents. We have to acknowledge that few municipalities or counties for that matter necessarily have the resources and expertise to identify, define and adopt a suite of local gun ordinances that will survive the probable legal challenges and court interpretation. Getting law enforcement buy-in will be a lot of work. Especially if there's a lot of, a lot of difference and lack of commonality among the neighboring jurisdictions. You know, we need to accept the fact we're not going to end mass shootings, we're not going to end gun violence. But we can make things a bit better and potentially lay out a framework that could be followed by others. And the more the join potentially the safer we can make it for folks. And Rachel, you probably have a better perspective than than most on just how hard it is to do some things, even at the local level, given Boulder's experience back from 2018.
Yeah, and I see that Jill Grano, who was on City Council at the time, is on this call. So I don't know if it's appropriate to invite her to chime in, but would welcome her perspective. But to the point of having the resource, resources and expertise to adopt ordinances, I will say that it was, I was involved from, from the other side of the dais at the time as an activist. And it was a lot of time and energy for our city attorney's office and staff just to research what might be a constitutional gun law and how to craft it. So it is a huge lift if you don't have a lot of help. And then there is the aspect of just there's really strong opposition. People turn out and there's a lot of kind of bullying and difficulty around just the, and a lot of just strong energy against trying to enact laws that are really about, you know, freedom from, from the devastating impacts of gun violence and be that suicide or homicide, mass shooting. So it is a really big lift for cities and a big part of what Tim and I are trying to do today is to start a dialogue about how we can make that really much easier and doable for for each individual city to adopt.
Next slide, please. So here are the kind of principles and kind of the way we look at this is how can we how can we do just what Rachel said, which is attempt to make things both a bit easier, but also lay the groundwork to make sure we're doing the right things and the most impactful things. The first is really around the definition of collective action. If we were to act together on a set of common ordinances, we may not be able to get them enacted statewide, but we can have a larger impact. And we could potentially impact a large percentage of the residents of Colorado. In order to do this, we've got to tap into the national experts, the folks who understand not just the legislation, but the impact of that legislation and how it should be prioritized. We also want to make sure that we're interacting with the district attorneys in both our jurisdictions, but also adjacent jurisdictions so that they can become allies. We can do things that are consistent. And we have the ability to talk with law enforcement and come up with approaches that make sense and can be accepted and enforced by our various local law enforcement groups. And then lastly, working with the Attorney General, the Attorney General's Office to get their review and their insight, because we want to make sure that anything we do is, will withstand the scrutiny of the courts and will will be upheld. So we want good ordinances, we want them to be defendable, and we want to do it in a way that has the most impact for our community. And our goal here is not to prescribe what anyone should do. Rather, it's to give a model set of ordinances that can be available to the different jurisdictions. And as, as Rachel said earlier, reach jurisdiction, the set that may make sense is going to potentially vary on, on what makes sense for their community and is supported by their residents. Rachel, any, any comment on the, the kind of the way we've tried to reach out to the other other folks for input?
Um, no, other than obviously, we're still at a really early stage and part of what we're doing here tonight is, is sort of inviting the dialogue around how can we do this in a way that is most helpful and responsive to any individual community's needs. So you know, the bottom bullet, our goal is, is with the help of Giffords and Everytown to just come with a, come up with a set of model ordinances that would be the same and vetted and, you know, I don't know that we can say will withstand constitutional ground challenges, but, but have the best likelihood of surviving, given the, given the legal landscape. So we want this to be super easy kind of plug and play. What are the, what are the ordinances that your constituencies are interested in? And here's a, here's a really light lift for your attorney's offices and to be able to run with those and modify them as, as desired by your cities. So that's kind of the the goal and the hope here is that we can, we can just be helpful and collaborative together here.
All right, Jennifer, next slide, please. And so as, as we indicated, we've reached out to the team at Giffords and, and Everytown to get not just their insights and legal advice, but also to kind of get feedback from them on this type of approach. Because they, as you heard during the introductions, they have experience working kind of across the country. And maybe at the start of their presentation, they can talk a little bit about that experience and what has worked and what hasn't worked. We've tried to integrate that into what we're presenting, what Rachel and I are presenting to you tonight. But it's, it's always best to hear from the experts directly. So we can move on to, to the next slide. And, you know, as we mentioned, we need to engage with the law enforcement community so that we're all on board and all kind of working together towards a common goal of making everyone safer. So if we can go to the next, next slide. And this, this really is the deliverables. Rachel, do you want to, do you want to kind of walk through these?
I can. And it's, it's, I'm discussing what I was getting at earlier, which is that we hope to have this, this set of thoroughly vetted ordinances that, that cities can kind of choose from the menu of options from. And we've asked Giffords and Everytown to kind of group them into three tiers, or it might be that they suggested that we group them into three tiers. So the first tier would be what we're calling Strong Group. And so those are ordinances that when we combine them with our Colorado state laws, they bring us to a Gifford standard of strong. And then we have a stronger group, which is when we combine it with state laws. We're at the, we as cities will be at their, what they call stronger level gun safety laws. And then strongest group will be a set of ordinances that if adopted by a city will combine with Colorado laws to bring your city to the, the kind of highest level of gun safety protection that Giffords recommends. And obviously, we would have no power to require any municipality to adopt any set of ordinances. We're just trying to lift up ideas for if, if what your community is after are the strongest kind of gun violence prevention laws that we've gleaned from around the country, then these are likely to be the ones that you're after. And then, you know, the next two tiers below that. And then we will work on sort of communication strategies for each ordinance that we'd be discussing and Giffords and Everytown are working together on that. And then for those that that do want to participate in kind of a wave one of rolling out some gun laws, we are looking at maybe a coordinated schedule for different cities to kind of join together and participate in a coordinated rollout. And, and that's beneficial in a couple of ways that I think we will get into later.
Excellent. So we, we just kind of walked through this. And again, as Rachel said, this is, this is a work in progress. We're looking for those who are interested to work with us. If you, if you want to roll your sleeves up on this and help work on the deliverables and, and coordinate with folks, we'd love to have you join us. But if you'd rather wait and see what the output looks like and decide at that point in time, if it's something that makes sense to socialize with your town boards, that's okay too. And lastly, if you think for your town makes the most sense to just wait and see how a first wave might roll out, that's okay also. So this is, this is not a, a quick fix to anything. What we're looking to do is set in motion a set of rational, well-thought-out things that can be adopted at a local level that can set the stage and, and give a, give a pathway for other communities to follow. So that, that's our goal here. As, as Rachel said, no one's required to do anything. But at the same time, the belief is if we can garner the resources into a toolkit, it can make it a lot easier and eliminate some of the resource barriers to actually examining this at a local city council or board of trustees level. Rachel, any, any other comments on this? I think we're almost ready to hand it over to our, to our partners here.
No, I would just say that the, the partners are going to explain kind of what, what sorts of laws we would be looking at or ordinances cities might want to roll out, because right now, you know, we're sort of theoretically talking about, you know, an action plan without giving any concrete examples. So I think that that will be helpful for the next phase of the conversation is sort of what, what are the options of, of what cities could do or might want to do? And, and how will those get kind of packaged up for us?
Yeah, and, and just to kind of add to that a little bit, we're intent, we intentionally don't want to roll things out, if you will, until they've been fully vetted. So the idea is firstly, we want to explain the process. Then what we want to do is let the experts talk a bit with you and then kind of get to work. So with that, Jennifer, can you move to the next slide? We've hit on, we've hit on all these things already. But just to reiterate Rachel's point from the beginning of this, the passing and the signing of Senate Bill 256 is a really big deal. It's, it's kind of a, a new day, if you will. State preemption hasn't been repealed before, at least that's our understanding from, from our partners. If we, if we have one municipality that takes this forward and adopts some additional things, that's a huge win. That, that makes 256 enormously impactful. If we get multiple municipalities to do that, that's a potential game changer. So no matter what, you know, we want to invite everyone to, at the very least, take a serious look at this, because in a lot of ways, it, it is a new day because of the action of the legislature with 256. So with, with that, Jennifer, you want to move to the next slide? And now we're going to pass it over to the team at Giffords and Everytown. Maybe, maybe we start with Allison and then kind of go from there.
Thanks very much, Tim and Howard, and thank you everyone for the opportunity and to speak tonight on this issue and in particular to the sponsors of SB 256 that will allow Colorado communities to take action on gun safety. So as Tim mentioned, along with my colleague Andrew from Everytown, I'm going to give some ideas for local collective action. And before I go into specific ordinances, I wanted to give some examples of the power of collective action. So California is a state that affords localities wide latitude to address gun violence. And now California has joined California, I'm sorry, Colorado has joined California as a handful of states that allows such local regulation. So in California, back in the early to mid nineties, rates of gun violence were peaking, in particular in urban areas. And as a result, California communities began passing hundreds of local laws over the next thirty years. And many of those laws that began as these collective local action efforts have become state laws. And just to give you a handful of examples, assault weapon and large capacity ammunition bans, laws that prohibit the sale and ma- manufacture of unsafe handguns, known as Saturday night specials and junk guns, laws that require guns to be safely stored in vehicles, that require gun dealer employees to undergo background checks, and many, many more. And, you know, partly as a result, California now has the strongest gun laws in the nation and a correspondingly very low gun death rate. Now, I want to also highlight one particular local effort known as the East Bay Corridor Project. So back in the early nineties, cities and a number of communities that were particularly impacted by gun violence were having issues with the proliferation of these cheap, dangerous, cheaply made and inexpensive and dangerous handguns. And those were the Saturday night specials or junk guns that I referenced. At the same time, there were huge numbers of gun dealers in certain communities that were particularly hard hit by gun violence, such as Oakland and Richmond, California. Oakland is in Alameda County and Richmond is in Contra Costa County. And in those two counties at that time, there were eleven hundred gun dealers. And there were a hundred and fifteen gun dealers in Oakland alone. So sixteen communities in these two counties banded together to pass a bunch of local laws, but in particular bans on these junk guns and also laws that would impose reasonable oversight and regulation of gun dealers operating in the communities. And this effort had really impressive results. In terms of the junk gun bans, in just a few years, all of the participating localities plus five neighboring jurisdictions and Alameda and Contra Costa County had banned junk guns. And that, those local bans be- became the basis for a very comprehensive statewide law in California known as the Unsafe Handgun Act. And California is now actually one of only two states that, that regulate unsafe handguns so comprehensively. And, and these communities also, you know, worked collectively to enact gun dealer ordinances. And as a result, it, the number of gun dealers in these communities dramatically dropped. In Oakland, the number dropped from a hundred and fifteen to seven and in Richmond from fifteen to two. And there are actually no gun dealers in these communities today. And actually, a US Department of Justice report looked at the impact of these dealer regulations and found that the ATF and local police were able to increase their monitoring of the smaller number of remaining dealers to ensure their compliance with applicable laws and regulations. So I gave that example and that history to illustrate the power of a collective movement of localities and how not only can they really move the needle on a state's gun violence prevention efforts, but when working in concert, they can have some pretty impressive results. So now I would like to give some examples of the types of ordinances that Tim and Rachel mentioned in, you know, what we would consider the strongest category. And I'm, I'm going to start with comprehensive dealer regulations because of the example that I just gave. And when I'm talking about comprehensive dealer regulation, I'm really talking about laws that give communities oversight and the power to revoke licenses of dealers who are not operating lawfully or not in compliance with laws that the community feels are necessary for responsible operation. So, you know, normally these licenses are issued by local law enforcement in the community. And, you know, just a point about non-compliant dealers and the ability of a locality to revoke a license by a non-compliant dealer. While ATF does license dealers and they, they grant them federal licenses or licenses, the ATF very rarely revokes dealer licenses, even by people, by dealers who are found to have violated federal or state law. So giving localities this power to revoke licenses or licenses, I'm sorry, is really actually an important and powerful step. These licensing schemes also afford law enforcement oversight of the dealers who are operating in their communities as well as community members. And localities can put a variety of conditions on licensure so they can require that background, gun dealer employees, background check their I'm sorry, gun dealer employers, background check their employees. They can require the gun dealers safely store their inventory when they're closed for business to prevent burglaries, in particular a type of burglary known as a smash and grab, where an assailant drives their car into the front of a gun dealership and makes out with all the inventory and that those happen all over the United States. And these localities can require gun dealers to actually video record transactions and video recording, which Walmart has been doing for many years, the largest gun retailer in the United States, allows law enforcement to solve crimes such as a straw purchase, a robbery and other types of gun crimes. And finally, localities can use licensure as a way to zone dealers away from schools and other areas where the presence of guns is particularly dangerous and other areas as well. And we know that gun dealer regulations are impactful, that when these laws are enacted at the state level, those states have significantly lower levels of gun trafficking and the exporting of crime guns to, out of the jurisdiction. Now, moving on, localities can also regulate gun carrying. And so this is important because there are a lot of negative effects associated with carrying guns in public, which I'll get into. So localities can ban open carry altogether and the carry of concealed firearms by people with permits in certain, what we call sensitive locations. So just to go to the data to support these recommendations, the data is clear that more guns in public lead to more shootings, not fewer. There's actually really powerful research out of Stanford University that states with weak laws regarding carrying have much higher rates of violent crimes. Guns that are carried in public are much more likely to be stolen and used in subsequent crimes. And despite the gun lobby propaganda, carrying a gun just doesn't actually work to make you safer. There is a study that shows that if you're carrying a gun, when you're actually attacked, you're more likely to be shot than if you were unarmed. So we know that carrying guns in public is a public safety hazard, actually. But in particular, open carrying of firearms has additional risks. You know, and, and the main risk with that is intimidation of people. When you are confronted with someone carrying a gun when you're trying to vote or speak at a legislative meeting or engage in free speech at a rally or protest, you may not engage in those First Amendment protected activities and these other constitutional rights because you are afraid of being shot by someone who gets really angry. And this is not, you know, a specious concern. This is, this has actually happened. When tensions get high and there are guns in public, people have been shot at movie theaters, in parking lots. But I think it's particularly insidious when these, these open carry situations are directed at people of color who are engaging in these activities, because we know that communities of color are disproportionately impacted by gun violence. So when a person of color is, you know, lining up at their polling station and they see a person carrying a gun, they very well may turn around. And we obviously do not want that to happen. And because there is no really valid reason for carrying that gun, we think that it makes very good evidence-based sense to ban this type of open carry. And also banning concealed carry in certain places where the presence of guns are particularly dangerous, such as government buildings or stadiums where tensions and emotions can run high, like I just described, bars where people are intoxicated and places where people are being treated for mental illness, places that have been historic targets of violence, such as houses of worship and areas where there are high concentrations of children and teens, such as daycares, playgrounds, et cetera, residential facilities. And I also want to mention that these carrying restrictions are also good options for colleges and universities that are in jurisdictions that have not chosen to take such local action, so they can do this on their own. So now I'm going to pass it over to Andrew from Everytown to discuss some other ideas.
Great, thank you so much, Allison, and thank you again, everyone, for having me here this evening. Again, Andrew Karwoski, I'm the Deputy Director of State Policy at Everytown for Gun Safety. Um, so the first thing I'm going to talk about, which you may wish to consider, are assault weapons prohibitions. So assault weapons, as we all know too well, are frequently used in mass shootings. Our organization actually did a study of all of the mass shootings defined as incidents where four or more people were shot and killed from 2009 to 2018. And what we found is that assault weapons were responsible for thirty-two percent of all of the firearm deaths in those incidents and about eighty-two percent of firearm injuries. So when assault weapons are used in mass shooting incidents, the resulting deaths are six times that of incidents that don't involve a assault weapon. So it's very clear that assault weapons pose a, a very real public safety risk. And there is the opportunity on the local level to regulate them. Obviously, Boulder has already done this, but there is the opportunity in other municipalities. And you just need to think carefully about how you structure the law, how you define assault weapons. Assault weapons, which are high-powered semi-automatic firearms, are generally defined by certain features and particularly the characteristics or the presence of a, a one or more military-style feature. So you have to think about how you define an assault weapon, how you address currently possessed assault, assault weapons, and also whether there, whether exemptions for law enforcement and military and whether there are exemptions you might need. But that's one possibility. And we also know that assault weapons are made even more effective when they are paired with high-capacity magazine restrictions. Similar, similarly to assault weapons, high-capacity magazines are frequently used in mass shootings. That same study that we put together found that when high-capacity magazines are used in a mass shooting, they result in about twice the number of deaths and fourteen times the number of injuries. We also found that in those incidents in that ten-year period, about sixty percent of mass shooting incidents involve a high-capacity magazine. So regulating them, again, makes public safety sense. There's a strong amount of research that regulating high-capacity magazines can prevent mass shootings and prevent gun violence generally. And, um, you know, it's something that Colorado state law actually already regulates. The main issue and the opportunity on the local level is that Colorado regulates high-capacity magazines as a general matter that can accept fifteen rounds of ammunition or more. Now, most state laws actually set the bar a little bit lower and regulate when ammunition, when a magazine can accept ten rounds of ammunition or more. So there's an opportunity on the local level to build upon what the state law does and set a lower bar. and set a lower bar and prohibit all high-capacity magazines that can accept 10 rounds of ammunition or more. So those two ideas naturally go hand in hand and can work well together and can help prevent mass shootings. Another idea is to address the growing threat of ghost guns, which are among the biggest gun violence threat this country faces. So ghost guns are DIY firearms. Certainly, they can be made by a 3D printer at home. But more commonly, they're made from easily accessible parts that can be purchased on the internet without a background check. Because they can be purchased without a background check and because they lack a serial number, which makes them untraceable and makes it very difficult for law enforcement to solve gun crimes when these guns do inevitably turn up at crime scenes, they are becoming the favorite tool of violent criminals, violent extremists, and other people who are legally prohibited from buying or having guns. So municipalities can take steps to regulate ghost guns. Colorado has no state ghost guns law. They do not regulate them. And unfortunately, the federal government does not either. Some of you may have heard, obviously, that the Biden administration has proposed a change to federal regulations to address the threat of ghost guns. But that is no barrier to local action and obviously it can take some time before the rule goes into effect. So localities can act immediately to do two things. They can first prohibit the possession, sale, or manufacture of unserialized firearm. Or alternatively, and in conjunction, they can prohibit the purchase or sale or possession of unserialized firearm parts, particularly firearm frames or receivers. And this would help address the growing threat of ghost guns and help ensure that they don't proliferate in your communities. Obviously, as I mentioned, it's a serious threat to, you know, gun violence prevention across the country. Ghost gun recoveries in California are up exponentially. We've seen cities like Washington DC and Syracuse, New York really experience an influx of ghost guns. And it's really a critical time to address this before, you know, the situation gets worse. So ghost guns are another idea. And then I want to talk about two more. So the next idea I wanted to talk about is setting a minimum age to purchase semi-automatic firearms. And this is actually raising the age to purchase rifles and shotguns to 21 years old. If you are 18 years old currently, under current law, you cannot walk into a gun store and you cannot purchase a handgun. However, you are free to walk into a gun store and purchase a rifle or purchase a shotgun, including the assault-style firearms that we just spoke about. Obviously, given that the shows that teenagers, 18- and 20-year-olds, commit gun homicides at four times the rate of adults who are 21 years or older, this is a public safety risk. There's also some evidence, given that most school shooters are 18 or younger and have a connection to the school, that setting a minimum age to purchase firearms at 21 can be an effective school safety solution. And again, remember, we're talking about purchase. And obviously, the intent is not to prohibit recreational activities or to prohibit hunting or sports shooting. You can design these ordinances in a really effective way that has narrowly tailored exemptions and again, will not have an undue impact on people's right to buy or have guns. And then finally, we're talking about waiting periods. As many of you know on this call, firearm suicide across the United States is an epidemic. The rates have been skyrocketing over the last decade. Colorado, and stats I looked at just before this call that my organization tracks based on CBC data, has the 13th highest rate of firearm suicide in the United States. So one way for localities to address this is to pass a waiting period provision. So waiting periods are cooling off period. And they insert a number of days or amount of time between the purchase, the attempted purchase of a firearm and when that firearm is actually transferred. And now this cooling off period can be incredibly critical because firearm suicide is often an impulsive act. And inserting that amount of time can allow people to get the help they need. They can reconsider their decision. And it's incredibly important when you consider that firearms are incredibly lethal means of suicide. Suicide attempts with a firearm are about 90% successful. When you compare other means, other means are about 4% successful. And the vast majority of people who attempt suicide and survive do not go on to commit suicide ultimately. So given that lethality and given the impulsive nature of firearm suicide, inserting this time period into, you know, between the purchase and the transfer of a firearm can be critical and it can help save lives. Now, you can decide what is appropriate for your local community based on the number of days you want to you want to consider. Most state laws focus on between three and 14 days. So those are the ideas that I was, that I'm going to cover tonight. And with that, I will pass it back and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Well, I am going to just check in on our schedule and the plan for the rest of the evening. Thank you to all the presenters that joined the Consortium of Cities this evening to talk about, you know, what what might we do in Colorado regarding the Senate Bill 256. So just to check in on the schedule and let folks know where we are, we will have some time for question and answer. I want to respect our break. At Consortium of Cities Group, we always take a little bit of break in case you need to change chairs or finish heating up your dinner so you can eat tonight as well. We'll jump back in in five minutes, so it'll be 7:32. And at that time, I'm going to give folks who've joined us since we started an opportunity, as we always do, to do your quick introduction. And then we are going to hear from our legislators and have a couple of questions for them after listening and participating in the conversation this evening. And then we'll go into discussion amongst local electeds. So I want to respect that opportunity to take a quick break. Thanks again to staff for being here and we will reconvene in five minutes. Great. All right. We are still at the Consortium of Cities meeting on July 7, 2021. And I want to give an opportunity for folks who weren't here at the beginning not to call you out, just to make sure that you're welcomed in. If you didn't get a chance to, just state your name and your title, which jurisdiction, which town that you're with. And I know we've got some council folks that have joined us as well as some some staff. So I will do my best to, here, find folks on the screen. So thanks, Adam, for having your camera on. So I'll start with Adam and then Eric and then Joan and then Carl.
I'm Adam Swetlik. I'm a member of Boulder City Council.
Sorry, was I there? I'm Eric Coombs Ismail. I'm on the Netherlands Board of Trustees.
Thanks, Eric. Joan, there you go.
Hi, Joan Peck. I'm a Longmont City Council.
Hello, this is Carl Castillo, Chief Policy Advisor of City of Boulder. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then I just saw Devin. There you are.
I'm Devin Schaaf, Brimfield City Council.
All right. And I'm sure I missed somebody. So jump on panelists and name and title. I think it was Kathleen maybe I missed.
Hi, yeah, Kathleen Hallgren with Everytown for Gun Safety.
Great. And we had Senator Finnberg on who had to jump off to another call. So we won't get to hear, we won't get to hear but that from the senator. But that'll give our reps a few extra minutes to talk with us this evening as well. So I want to, as we start back up again, just give a quick kind of touch base a little bit on the consortium of cities in general. We talked at the beginning of the meeting about some of the work that we're doing right now. But I think it might be helpful for for folks who are participating to hear about some of the accomplishments and the work that the consortium has done in the past to give you some background about this particular group that's led by Boulder County. In 2001 and then again, 2007 to 2024, so has not expired yet, the countywide transportation sales tax was approved by voters at both those times and implements a 1/10th of 1% sales tax for transportation improvements. And this was sponsored and supported by this same group, the Consortium of Cities. At that time, the tax provides revenue for roadway and bikeway improvements, intersection projects, transit projects, pedestrian access projects, and improvements to regional hiking and biking trails. And the tax will sunset, as I already mentioned, in 2024. A couple of other examples of work that has started with this same group, the Consortium of Cities. In 2012 to 2013, the Water Stewardship Task Force and Report was initiated and worked on providing governmental, nonprofit, and private sector entities within Boulder County a forum for promoting water stewardship through collaborative initiatives which mutually benefit our communities and our watersheds. And the task force explored such issue areas as water conservation, water sources and supply, coordinated drought response, and a variety of educational campaigns. The implementation plan completed by the task force continues to inform water policy and programming across the county. Another example in 2016 was Permanent Supportive Housing Study. In February of 2016, the Consortium of Cities collaborated with the 10-year plan to end homelessness Board of Directors to prepare an assessment of the need for permanent supportive housing throughout Boulder County. And that focused specifically on chronically homeless individuals individuals in our community who are experiencing homelessness in a chronic fashion. This study included an assessment of the barriers and challenges to developing permanent housing solutions for these residents and identified the types of properties and projects that could be constructed in Boulder County to meet permanent supportive housing needs. And so I share those as just a few of the examples and to just base on a couple of the points that folks shared in the presentation about what can happen when we do collaborative work, what can happen when we have dialogues and conversations with local elected officials who know their communities but were all part of the Boulder County region. And so I thought that might be helpful for folks who are maybe joining in on this conversation for the first time. So we'll jump back to our agenda. And we are moving on to our legislators. And so I want to give a couple of minutes. Thank you both Rep. Amable and Rep. Hooton for being with us this evening. I've got a couple of questions that I want to ask and then give you all a chance to respond together. The first one, we'd love to hear. And it might be helpful just to have a quick little piece around the 256 from a specific standpoint as well. But after hearing tonight's conversation and/or after gathering feedback from constituents and stakeholders, what are your thoughts on the implementation of Senate Bill 256 at the local level? Love to hear from both of you.
Well, thank you, Marta. And I think I'll go first. Just as the House sponsor, I do want to acknowledge and really appreciate my colleague Representative Judy Amable for her bill, which I hope she has an opportunity to speak about. The preemption bill, what it does is it restores a provision in Colorado state constitution that has been there since 1902, which acknowledges the right of Colorado communities to pass ordinances and regulations around gun legislation that reflects the values and the interests of their communities. That is what this bill does. In 2003, the Owens administration led an effort to overturn that provision in our state constitution. And they were successful in that. And so what Senate Bill 256 does is it restores a provision in Colorado state constitution that's been there since 1902. And that is acknowledging that every community has their own ideas about what makes them feel safe. And they could be vastly different. We come from a very large state. We've got a large rural population. We've got urban areas that have, you know, very different opinions about safety and how they would like to see their laws, their ordinances reflect their communities. So what this bill does is once again restore the opportunity for robust conversation at the local level around gun prevention, violence, ordinances. That's what it does. It does not require anything more than that. And I think if anything reflects the spirit of Colorado, it's the opportunity to give local communities voice and choice on matters that affect their communities quite deeply and very personally. And so that's why I was very proud to be on this bill with Senator Fenberg. And everything else that was discussed tonight about gun violence, I feel very care very deeply about as a policymaker and just as a mother, as a person in the United States seeing the statistics. But if we're speaking about this bill repealing the Colorado preemption on local control of gun violence, this is exactly why I stood behind it and was happy to advance it in the House.
Thank you.
Thanks for that nice introduction, Edie. And we did really work together as a team in the state legislature this year to pass some gun safety regulations. And I think what I heard tonight, this idea of creating some model legislation so that cities can easily decide, okay, we like this, we like that, we don't like this, we don't like that, and enact what it makes sense for them or nothing if that's what they choose. And I think that is in the spirit of the law. And so I think you all are really doing the right thing here by laying that out so that cities, making it easier for cities to decide what they want to do. I do think it would be very powerful if a lot of the cities in Boulder County decided they wanted to pass a similar set of rules. And that would make all of those regulations stronger because people would have to travel further to thwart those laws or, you know, to purchase guns. And I think, of course, I believe that if we have less guns, we'll have less gun violence. I come at this also from the perspective of, yes, mass shootings are horrible, but we have a much bigger problem and that is gun suicide and what we really horribly call everyday gun violence. So every day, people are dying on our streets. They're dying in their homes from gun violence. And so I'm very interested in us addressing all the different things that go along with that. I have been reading the chat and I know there's a lot of people on there that are feeling unheard and who are gun proponents. And I think that's a voice that we have to listen to. And one of the things that a lot of them are talking about is mental health. And of course, I am a strong proponent of improving our mental health care delivery, the services that we offer. And so I agree, we really do have to look at mental health in our community. And that is really an important part of this conversation. Currently, you can go purchase a gun that can fire however many rounds is legal here in Colorado. And it takes you about maybe 20 minutes on average to complete that purchase. If instead you wanted to go and see a psychiatrist, that would take you at least 60 days, if not more. And that is if you could even find a psychiatrist that would take you and if you have insurance and a way of paying for it. So I think we have to change that equation. We have to have more mental health resources. And so I'm very interested in working on that as well and that. And that's been a huge focus for me at the legislature and and also locally. I think we're looking at trying to improve mental health resources here in Boulder County. And I think that should be part of this conversation. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you both. Appreciate that. We've got one other question, just to allow you to to give some of your input and expertise. And curious, are there implementation? And of course, speaking to Senate Bill 256, but are there implementation approaches or maybe preferences that you're hearing about from your Boulder County constituents that would fall in line with this conversation? And that's for both Rep Amable and Rep Putin. Now, if you want to go in the same order or swap it up a little?
I'm sorry, Marta, would you repeat the question?
Oh, yeah, of course. Just curious about if there are implementation approaches. Right, the bill gets made, but then there's the implementation that typically happens on a local level. So are there implementation approaches or preferences that you're hearing specifically from your Boulder County constituents?
Well, I would I would just say that the Boulder City Council and the Boulder County Commissioners now have the ability to open up discussions about possible ordinances or regulations in our city and in our county. And I think that's where this begins because we have restored that authority to them.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think every locality is going to implement this law in the way that makes sense for them. And so I think for some some places, they will want to ask people to vote on that. And in other places, the local government will want to decide what they what they believe to be the the voice of the people. And I know that Boulder has a really, the city of Boulder has a very robust process for listening to citizens before they enact any legislation. And I think that's good and right. And I hope other that every locality that wants to implement these laws will have a robust process for taking citizen input because I think that does make for better regulations.
Great. Appreciate both of you joining in on the conversation. And you're welcome to stay and listen to the dialogue. And again, just to hear what some of the conversations are, one, but also to look at some ways that you might be able to support that work as you move move along in in your public service as well. So I want to open up to our electeds to ask some questions. We have presenters, we're kind enough to stay on and be here to be present with every town and with Giffords Legal Center, and of course, some of our own local electeds, Rachel Friend and Tim Howard, who brought on the collaborative action. So I want to open it up to questions. And I am, you know, just moderating that and will do my best to watch hands that might jump up or or other hands that might pop up on the screen so that we can talk about this conversation. And we will start closing up to get to an adjournment at eight twenty five. So we still have a little bit of time for conversation. Kyle Brown, thanks for raising your hand virtually. Jump on in.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it. My light for their leadership on this on this issue. It's really wonderful to have such great representation here in Boulder County. I wanted to ask maybe the commissioner or trustee Howard or council member friend if they could speak a little bit to to the next steps that we as a consortium might be taking on this issue.
So I'll step in and and offer some initial thoughts. And then Rachel, if you can chime in and Marta as well. Back back after the King Super shooting and after the initial outreach to Boulder City Council, our Superior Board of Trustees, we had a working session where we discussed what what could we possibly do locally that could have an impact? And the recognition at the time that the state preemption was there. What we realized is it was premature to do that. But my perspective on this is the next step is as we start to get the model, the draft model legislation, we make that available to folks. And then they bring it to their local town boards, have discussions about it. And then as Representative Amable and Representative Hooten so rightly said, then set up the plan for getting resident input and and having a dialogue about this and understanding where is your town or your city or your county on this? And where where do you want to go? Do you want to adopt anything, you know, and as Representative Amable said? Or nothing, or some combination of things that can have an impact? So to me, the the start is around getting that model legislation, which we're working with Giffords and every town to get some drafts of that in the weeks ahead and then make that available. It's it's really a resource. And then start the dialogue among the council members and then set up the plan that process. Rachel?
You muted yourself there, Tim, at the end. I wasn't sure. Yeah, I I agree with all that. I think sort of as as every town in Giffords are coming up with the model legislation, there ideally would be a core group of us from from this subset of of local representatives who are collaborating and kind of coordinating on how to do outreach and next steps because we are pretty early in this process outside of the work that Giffords is doing. So I think a concrete next step would be having people who are interested in sort of being involved in this and maybe ambassadors for reaching out to their councils. Let Marta know and then Tim and I can get your emails and we can sort of form a broader working group from within this group. You're on mute, Marta.
Yeah, thank you. I couldn't find my button here, but as I'm looking through screens, thanks. Commissioner Levy, did you want to respond to that or did you have a separate question?
Oh, I don't I don't know if I'm unmuted yet here.
There you are.
Okay, all right. Well, no, I I actually had lowered my hand, but since you called on me, I had a different question, actually. And but I lowered my hand because I think I figured out the answer to it. So some of the earlier presenters talked about some other things, such as the a minimum age of purchase and licensing gun dealers. And I'm not familiar with what the licensing requirements are, but I was kind of curious from Rep Putin whether that kind of provision would be included in the allowance of local control. I I'm pretty sure it was, but so much of the discussion was around banning assault weapons that I think a lot of the, you know, the maybe the more impactful, powerful aspects of the bill may have been overlooked. So I I just think some of these ideas that we heard earlier on are really important to keep in mind. And and then the other aspect of the bill that I was especially interested in that you know, really doesn't require collective action is where is determining where people are allowed to carry a weapon. And and that also was preempted. And your bill restored that right to prohibit guns from parks where children are playing or from grocery stores or places like that. So I just, I mean, I think the first thing was a question as to how broad that allowance for local control is. And then the other was just an observation.
Right, so I will address that your, okay, your second question, which is the authority that a local that a local jurisdiction would have on controlling where firearms can be carried. And on public spaces, they do have that jurisdiction. And businesses have the authority to restrict concealed carry in their on their private property. The bill also includes the higher higher ed institutions like the University of Colorado. So they are now their authority has been restored to determine where on campus concealed weapon can be carried and where it cannot. These, the bill, once again, gives local jurisdictions the authority to make determinations about where firearms can be carried, what firearms can be sold in their communities. And it's really that simple. The state of Colorado allows for concealed carry. So if you are traveling through a community that has ordinances around concealed carry, but you're just traveling through, you're stopping, you're not living here, you're not violating, you don't know specifically in clear terms what our local ordinances are, then you are acting in good faith. You're not violating anything. There is no ordinance or regulation that any community in Colorado is going to consider around the possession or sale of firearms that is not going to involve a very robust community conversation where everyone has an opportunity to weigh in. And that includes everyone on this chat who lives in any community that are considering ordinances or regulations around firearms carry purchase, use. And Claire, help me if I didn't address your question more fully.
Was that it? We didn't hear you, Claire.
No, I said it's fine. There are a lot of other people that have their hands up.
Okay. Joan had a hand up, so I wanted to, excuse me, council member. Peck, do you still have a question?
No, Marta, thanks for asking. I was just going to talk about some of the things that I want to happen in Longmont, see if anyone else was on this track. But I realize this is a Q and A for the panelists. So I don't think this is the proper format. So thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Christensen? I can't hear you yet.
Sorry, couldn't find my button.
Yeah, I I wanted to thank our elected officials for their work on this. I know it's very, very difficult. And and it's a serious national problem and state problem and local problem. And the only way to actually do this is slowly and carefully, as you have done. And I do know exactly how difficult it is because every time we try to discuss anything even slightly about guns of any sort in the city of Longmont, we are greeted by the same sort of comments that you see in the chat. And it that there isn't a possibility of conversation because it's just about snide comments and insults and threats. And, you know, it's it's very, very difficult. And so I I congratulate you for trying to do this on a statewide basis and making some headway. And I do think that we can perhaps craft something, but we we do have to get the cooperation of each other, not just within the cities, but also not just Boulder County, but the adjacent counties. Because, you know, as just for instance, a guy went up to, and this is an outlier. Most people who have guns are really good people and they're responsible. But this guy went up to Loveland to try to buy a gun. The guy ran a background, the clerk ran a background check on him and said, no, you've got an assault record and I'm not going to sell you the gun. And then he said, well, sell it to my girlfriend. And the guy said, no, that's illegal too. And then he went up to Fort Collins and the clerk sold him a gun. Then he came down to Longmont and started waving his gun around in the play area in front of the theater. And someone called the police. The police came, he wouldn't surrender his gun, and they shot him. But so this is an example. I'm just saying this is like Weld County is six miles away. Whatever we do, it really needs to be something that the adjacent counties can collaborate with and and join in because we can do whatever we want, but it really doesn't. It's not that effective, you know, unless we can get everybody piece by piece. But this is the way to begin is to collaborate with each other and and listen to everybody, even when they're being rude, and try to have a community discussion about what the community actually needs. So I I really appreciate all your hard work. I think this, the red flag law was particularly important because, as we know, suicide is the greatest cause of gun violence, eighty percent. So it's not people like this crazy guy I was talking about who commit gun violence. It is actually people turning it upon themselves. And so it has to go hand in hand with mental health care. And as somebody said, that's really, as Steve Fenberg said today when he was in an interview, we do, the state is addressing mental health care, but that's not part of the laws. It's it's a separate issue. So thank you again for doing this. And if you have any suggestions, and I know that Tim and Rachel will be working on building a a model for something we can do that will be efficient and useful and and get community acceptance. So thank you very much.
Great. I'm moved to Councilmember Friend, I believe you were next.
Well, I was, thanks, Marta. I was going to follow up with Joan Peck's statement that she thought maybe this was the the wrong time for the conversation. And I'm I'm really curious what she's thinking about for Longmont. So I wanted to say, at least from my perspective, I'd love to hear what what she's thinking and have that dialogue. And then also wanted to respond to Polly's comments about, you know, essentially, this is, these are really hard conversations to have. They are very emotional and loaded. And, you know, it's it's not easy to to take up gun violence prevention laws. So I I guess I just want to be pretty direct about that. Having worked a lot as a gun violence prevention activist on on state laws, I'm sure that our state representatives can can speak to kind of standing in that fire as well. But at the end of the day, it is about trying to protect our communities, which I think is our our number one job as elected representatives. And so I think it's it's important that we that we do try and be brave. I I think also Polly was getting out like it's it's better if this is done more broadly. Like ideally, this, you know, the the strong laws that we seek would be done at the national or the state level. But what we're left with is is picking this up from from our positions and kind of trying to lift it up. So I I guess I'm just inviting inviting us all to kind of lean in and and be brave where it's needed.
Thanks for that. Thanks for that. Councilmember Peck?
Yes, I am going to speak. Thank you. I saw in the chat that they said that I was afraid to speak up. I am not. So what we talked about a couple of years ago and Lance, two, I think his name is Tuve or Tuve, I don't know how to pronounce it, in the chat was correct in that we did have a conversation from about, with the public about gun safety and firearms, et cetera, et cetera. And what was mentioned was mental health constantly. So about a month ago, I made a motion that we put on the agenda to put half of our marijuana tax into mental health and addiction. So that will be coming up on our calendar, probably in the next couple of meetings. So I agree that this is a mental health problem first and foremost. The far right, the far left, everybody in between have mentioned that it is a mental health issue. And I agree that that's where we need to start first. And all the people in the chat, if you really believe that you should be able to own a gun, help us solve this problem. Help us solve the people that are making your rights so bad to the public. Help us solve the bad players. And for me, mental health is where you start. And that is what Longmont's going to be addressing. So I just want you to know that we are on this. We get it. Thank you. Oh, can I say one more thing?
Yep.
Can the host, and I assume that you, Marta, would you, would you say that my understanding of this meeting was not that it was going to be proactive or interactive? It was just inviting people to hear about the laws that were passed, not to, we didn't, you didn't invite pro or anti-gun people. It looks like it was just people who, to explain the laws. So I think that's an important thing to mention to all of the anti-people who are angry that they're not being allowed to talk.
Sure, yeah. And I am not reading through the chat because I'm trying to manage this other side. But I can reiterate what I did say at the beginning of the meeting. Again, this is a consortium of cities meeting that we meet every other month to talk about issues that are affecting our community priorities and have done some really amazing collaborative work. And you're right, and this is another conversation with elected officials around Boulder County to address some legislation from this session, the same way that we will be talking about the American Rescue Plan Act and those funds, the same way that we'll be talking about transportation bills that have passed, the same way that we're, our meeting in regards to our sale, road tax, et cetera. So hopefully that's helpful, just to clarify any questions that folks might have about, one, what the meeting is. And I heard, I believe in some of the response from presenters, that is really important is, okay, with any bill that gets passed, then we have an opportunity locally to implement, to make a choice. How are we going to implement it? How might, wherever that lands? And so that's the conversation that folks said, yeah, let's have a discussion together about that. And we can put our heads together and put our work together. But what somebody's already said and is really important to read, right, I believe as well, is this is not the public process. This is a conversation just to learn a little bit more. Okay, what exactly does 256 do? What would that look like? How could we come together and have this conversation? Who could I connect with? And then each one of our towns and municipalities, hopefully around the state of Colorado. And wow, would that be national conversations to then talk about how do we work with everybody in our community to make sure that folks understand what a bill like 256 can do? And if it's appropriate and what it looks like to use that type of legislation? And it's the same for every single bill that was passed this session by our hardworking legislators. So hopefully that clarifies a little bit. And I saw a hand come up from our trustee, Tim Howard.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment to Councilwoman Christensen on your comments. I think you're absolutely right. There, the real opportunity here is for us to find not just what works for our individual local communities, but for us to collaborate, to share that, to take lessons learned. And it may be, hey, model legislation XYZ, here's the problem with that and we shouldn't be moving forward with that. It's collaborating and then reaching beyond the borders of Boulder County and Broomfield, city and county. Because what we want to do is we want to make all the communities safer. And the more commonality we have and the more collaboration we have, the greater the opportunity for that. So I want to thank everyone in this, in this group. We're kind of taking the time to listen what's being presented because I do think we all share a common goal of reducing gun violence in whatever way we can. And again, as has been stated so effectively, it's not just mass shootings. There are so many aspects to this. And we should be looking at a set of ordinances that have impact across all the different areas of gun violence. And again, suicide has to be at the top of the list when we're talking about that. So thank you again for the opportunity tonight. And Marta, if it's all right, can we potentially ask our, the folks from Giffords and every town, if they kind of have some kind of closing thoughts as some of the local communities kind of embark on, you know, investigating and researching this?
That's perfect timing. Thanks, Tim. That's exactly where I was thinking. So you just saved me a chat question to you for our, every town and Giffords, if you'd like to, closing remarks based on some of the things that you've heard or anything you'd like to add now that we've started the conversation.
Sure, I can go ahead. I would just say that having worked with numerous communities over the years on all range of gun violence prevention ordinances at the local level, I think, you know, what I'm hearing is exactly right that these approaches do need to be tailored to the communities. And community buy-in is of course, very important. I do think it's also worth remembering that this issue is often presented as very polarizing, where you have a lot of people on, you know, both sides of this issue. But that's not actually very accurate. You know, over 97% of Americans, including gun owners, support universal background checks. Yet I know that when I testify in state legislatures on background check bills, you know, I hear a lot of very angry voices opposing background checks. And I think sometimes there's a misconception that there are equal, you know, equal people on both sides of the issue. But I don't think that's true. I think most Americans and probably most of your constituents are in favor of reasonable evidence-based effective gun regulations. And as long as you move forward with the data and deliberate in a public manner, then, you know, I think you're well positioned to enact these ordinances.
Yeah, and I'll just echo everything Allison said. I mean, I think all of that is right. I think the great thing about Senate Bill 256 is it allows local communities to do what's best for their communities. And all of these policies that we talked about tonight can help save lives, they're evidence-backed, you know, and they are effective and will be made more effective by the collaborative efforts of all the folks on these calls. So, you know, I know every town, I know Giffords are here to, you know, support your efforts and lend our expertise. And, you know, we definitely look forward to working with everybody. So thank you again for having us.
Great, thank you. I'm going to give another bit here if there's any other questions from folks. Don't want to get one last question in, as we've got some of our subject matter experts here with us. And if not, as we always try in our consortium meetings, if we can gift everybody a little bit of time so you can go actually eat dinner or take a walk or have some family time, whatever it might be, we will welcome that. I just want to thank again, staff, as elected, we are required and we sign on to serve at any hour of the day. And our staff isn't. That's not part of the role. And so we're appreciative and just want to say again, thanks to the staff that is here supporting. And a special shout out to Mark Resin, who is the lead from our policy analyst team to make these meetings happen for us every other month. And some of the questions that were around next steps is really to just think about and talk with your councils and your own towns and jurisdictions to figure out, you know, what that might look like. And you're welcome to reach out to us at Boulder County, commissioners@bouldercounty.org and/or to our council member's friend or trustee Howard to get involved in the collaborative action that they put out there as an invitation. And we will wrap up and for our consortium members and public, as always, are always welcome. Our next meeting will be on August 4th and we are looking forward to continuing just the collaborative work, the discussion, sharing of resources and sharing of ideas. That's how we make stronger communities. That's how we come out in crises more effectively, more efficiently and with more folks moving forward in resilient manner. So appreciate all of you and I hope you all have a great night. Thanks again, staff.
Hi, everybody.